Minor to the committee. And to our guests that this meeting is being recorded. I'll do the roll call. Do we have Dave?
Here.
Jess?
Here.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Here.
Do we have Mike? Randy?
Here.
Tom?
Tom's not a pending, Craig.
All right. Thank you, Robin. All right, thank you. Our next meeting is going to be on Monday, October seventeenth at seven P M. Is that? All right. We have our workshop, correct, on? Is that the seventeenth?
Yes, it is.
All right, consent agenda. We have approval of minutes. For September twelfth, the counts payable warrants, payroll warrants, and disposal of surplus property.
So moved, Lisa.
Second.
June.
Thank you. All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Public communications, I believe we had one. Person looking to speak this evening.
Yes, but I don't see him. Okay.
Okay, then we will proceed on. Thank you. Reports and information. I don't have anything, and Superintendent Morgan, go to you.
It'll be the same thing for me. I'm just going to cover the information in the packet tonight.
Okay. So we'll talk about as we get to it.
Yes.
Moving on to all business, we have the athletic extracurricular handbook language superintendent. I believe there's some follow up from our last meeting.
Yes, so I did speak with legal counsel, and I did forward the information. To the committee, and our legal counsel Nick Domenolo has recommended. Just some clearer language for us. I don't know if everyone received that email on the school committee, but I can certainly. Go over if that's what you'd like. I can go over it if that's what you'd like me to do. It does come with a parent sign off. So it comes with recommended handbook language. It would go in our student handbook. And it does come with a parent sign off, and this is recommended. Due to a recent case in the state of Massachusetts, it is recommended for all public schools and in the Commonwealth. To essentially move forward with this language, and again, our attorney has made it a little bit more specific. And again, just wondering if the committee needs me to go into more detail.
Susan, do you have a question, or? Would your hand up from the waiting room there? All right, anyone else have question, comments?
Sorry, I do have a question. I couldn't find the unmute button.
Go for it.
Is this just an enhanced waiver to what we already have, or is this an additional waiver?
This was an additional waiver to basically. Eliminate claims of negligence on locker room supervision. Which has not been in place previously.
Okay, because I was reading through it, I'm like, well, this sounds an awful lot like. What we've had, but it's adding. Something to it. So that's why I was curious if this was replacing or we were gonna have to.
So this would be new language added to the handbook.
Okay, it's basically. Making parents aware that. Conduct that's expected in the. During the day in the classroom is also expected. On the courts and fields, but as far as bullying and harassment. And everything else. And by the way, part of that is we need to be in the locker rooms to help. You know, enforce that.
So it's not being in the locker room. It's, it's, as I explained at the last meeting, it's periodically walking through. We cannot have staff in the locker room.
Right, it may involve trips into the locker room. It's probably a better way to say that.
In the enhanced version basically says that if something happens. In the locker room and there's not adult supervision in the locker room. That the parents are aware that that is the case.
Right, it would. Right. Thank you.
Anyone else question? Lisa?
Yep, Brad, is it something that will be implemented this winter? For sports, or is it gonna be this fall? Yeah.
It will be implemented within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
So as soon as we can, it'll, it's possible we'll get it in for the fall season, but whatever, if we do get it in, it will be thoroughly communicated to families. So it will be communicated to families for both high school. And we also have some middle school athletic programs too, which entail changing rooms and things of that sort. So. We'll make sure that once the committee votes, it gets out to the community members as well and families and that they're aware.
All right, anything else on the waiver? Or the handbook language, I should say? If not, I will take a vote to approve that.
So moved.
I'll second Lisa.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So it is unanimous. Thank you. I do believe Mr. McPhee is on, so we will jump back to public communications. Unless there's any objections. All right. All right, Mr. McPhee, you should be able to unmute, and then we'll give you. Three minutes. I think you were gonna talk about Ashby Elementary.
Yeah, I joined the meeting the other day, and then there's been a lot of, there's been chatter going around in town. Originally. Your reports were saying that they were gonna make Ashby a regional school. Within the district, meaning that we would share with like Townsend and stuff like that, and that is not happening. The question is, is Hawthorne Brook needs repairs, and Ashby Elementary also needs repairs. Prior discussion was that we, that the North Middlesex Regional School District will have the case. Right? We come to find out if we do the counting of the numbers correctly, and we just drop out of the Hawthorne Brook. We come up with close to two hundred and fifty-nine students to go after the grant. By doing that, though, it drops Hawthorne Brook capability of getting a grant. But why should Ashby be paying for Hawthorne Brook? If Hawthorne, if we're not gonna get that money? Why should we be footing the bill to do Hawthorne Brook? The question that has come around is. We should be looking at having the kids brought back from Hawthorne Brook back to Ashby. Let them pay for their own school or merge with us. They, we have a better chance of getting, if we bring the kids back, of getting the grant. And this is why. It's been said, and it was said to. The Board of Selectmen, you're willing to give up fifty-five percent of a potential state grant to keep the kids over in Townsend because of that? You need, we need to look at this and pull the kids back or pull the kids from Hawthorne Brook into Ashby. There's enough room there. There's enough building space already. Why can't we do this? This is a big question. And so. When, we shouldn't be paying for two schools. We either merge it. Or we. Have to decide what we're gonna do. But there's no reason to be paying. Twenty percent of a seven point seven to thirteen million dollars for Hawthorne on top of. The sixteen to thirty million for Ashby with the inflation add twenty percent. Twenty-six percent, I'm sorry, of the Hawthorne Brook repairs will be footing based upon the numbers of students that we have there now. So the answer is either we, we should pull them back to Ashby. Save on the transportation, save on the building. And have the kids back in our school district. This is what everybody wants at Ashby, maintain the kids in our school district as much as possible. This was voted on, as you guys saw. Nobody realized this number was out there for the Hawthorne Brook. I didn't know until we got hit with it at the Ashby Elementary meeting. This was raised about the cost of that building coming in also. That's pretty much what I have to say.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll, I'll refer any of those questions or responses to. To the Ashby Elementary School Building Committee. They can. Investigate that and come back with a responsive warrant. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Pat, for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to. New business. First up is out of state field trip request for the service learning to New Orleans. Principal McMahon is on. Awesome. Mr. McMahon, if you're talking, we can't hear you, or Chris Smith?
He's all, he's gonna be on in a second. He's just having some difficulties. There he is.
Difficulties are children based, not technology based. It's time, Craig, sorry. Yeah, so Noah in New York Service Learning trying to resurrect their trips this year. The past couple of years, it's been focused on. More in-state community service during February vacations, but this year with. Advisors back in both groups. I know that Noah has put in for theirs. I'm not sure if New York Service already submitted their request also. I know Noah has. And they're gonna go February vacation. They're probably gonna depart. The Thursday prior to the start of vacation, and then obviously return in time for the break when they return. I forget the exact vacation date, but. They missed two days of school, and then back after vacation, after a full week in New Orleans, so. Great. We vote, Craig, I mean.
Randy, a question or comment?
I'm just wondering if we need to think about just having some sort of. Letter out to parents, because COVID is not gone. I don't think we need to hold back the trip for it. But I think we have, need to have some agencies because it is contagious. We don't want the entire group. And we want to make sure that parents understand what, what the procedure is, like with most illnesses, but especially with COVID. I'm not sure if we need to have something special for that. And that goes for the, the DC trip as well.
I like that, Randy. I think it's a good idea. It's a good kind of insurance plan for our kids too, so I'd, I'd be open to that very much, so. Good call on that.
Anybody else questions, comments? If not, I'll take a motion to have the school committee approve the North Middlesex Service Learning. Group to travel to New Orleans during the April twenty twenty-three school vacation.
So moved. Second?
About Lisa and Susan?
Yes, lovely Susan was right.
All right, any last questions or comments? Okay, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that's unanimous. All set. Thank you, Principal McMahon.
Thank you, folks. Much appreciated. We'll keep you posted. There'll be fundraisers naturally, and then in June, the kids want to share out their trip as well, so we'll get you involved in that as well.
Excellent, I appreciate it, and I like the heart balloon you have in the background. It's very nice.
It was for a birthday party, Craig. Thank you for the.
Happy birthday. All right, moving on to the next out-of-state field trip request, NMS students to Washington DC. Ms. Young?
Sure, so similar to the high school, we're looking to resurrect our trip to Washington DC for our eighth grade students. Hawthorne Brook is going to do the same thing. We're looking to go in for four days in May. The cost would be about eight hundred and fifty dollars a student. The dates of the trip would be May twenty-third through twenty-sixth, so the students would be out of school for four days.
All right, any questions? I have an eighth grader who is super excited that the trip is coming back, so glad you and the team could make it happen.
Yes, we did an informal poll, and the response was overwhelming that students want to go.
Absolutely.
And I'm just gonna basically say ditto to everything that Ms. Young said. I think ours is we go in April eleventh to fourteenth, I believe.
Excellent. Dave, your question?
Yeah, so one concern that I had heard raised. Ms. Young, you just said that the cost was four hundred and fifty per student?
No, eight hundred and fifty.
Eight hundred and fifty per student. So I knew that there were some concerns raised about students who might not be able to afford. Either the full cost or some of the cost. Is there anything that we can do? Fundraising wise? Either, is there any fundraising that we can do that can help out students that are needs-based?
Sure, that's a really good question. The cost of the trip has actually come down since before COVID. I think the last time we went, it was eight hundred and ninety dollars. So I was holding my breath to see what the cost was, so I was glad to see it actually had gone down a little bit. Surprise, but our PTO definitely helps with some fundraising for that, scholarships. So we'll continue to do that. And of course, you know, there are many generous, you know, people in our community who do donate. To pay for parcel trips for students. So no student has ever not gone on the trip because they couldn't afford it.
That's great to hear. Thank you so much.
All right, any other questions? And I guess just a clarification that this is for both Nissatistit and Hawthorne Brook. Is that what? We need to approve?
It, just to clarify, it does only say Nissatistit on the agenda.
Yep, so that was, I, I just received Hawthorne Brooks today, so it didn't officially make it on the agenda.
So it's up, it's really up to the committee. We can certainly wait until the seventeenth and put it on the agenda then.
Can we make an amendment?
You can make an amendment. I don't see why not. Or you could just make a motion, because there's no motion yet.
So Dave, the dates for Nissatistit are May twenty-third to the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And Hawthorne Brook is, incorrect me if I'm wrong, Jason, April eleventh to the fourteenth?
Right, yeah.
If that helps you, Dave.
One more time of those Hawthorne Brook ones?
Hawthorne Brook is April eleven through the fourteenth.
Is. Go ahead.
I do have a question for the principal of Hawthorne Brook.
Yep. Hello?
Just want to confirm that the, that you have the same. I guess volunteering from the staff?
Yeah, the last count we had was approximately twelve staff members that were interested in going on the trip.
Fantastic, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I'm just pulling up the language real quick. So. I move that the school committee vote to approve the. Oops, sorry, wrong one. I move that the school committee. Vote for the North Middle, or Nissatistit Middle School students. To go on the Washington DC trip. On May twenty-third through May twenty-second, as well as the Hawthorne Brook. Middle School students go on the Washington DC trip. April eleventh through April fourteenth.
Just to clarify, you mean the eighth grade students, correct?
Yes, the whole schools, everybody.
I'll second.
All right, Dave and Lisa, any other questions or comments? All right, so none. Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yeah.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
And for super clarity, it's the eighth grade students. He was joking. Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is. Unanimous. Thank you, and Principal Young and Wester appreciate again all the efforts to. Bring the DC trip back. So thank you. All right, moving on to student activity accounts, Ms. Haines.
Yes, hi, everybody. I wanted to let you know that we recently completed a review of the student activity accounts. It's very much like an audit, but they don't actually call it that. They call it a, or a review, and. We did the. North Middlesex Regional High School Student Activity Accounts and Nissatistit Middle School. Last year, we had completed the Hawthorne Brook. Student Activity Accounts, and one of the things that they brought up several times is that we should annually be having the school committee review. And approve the student activity accounts. Before. Each year before school starts or if there's been a change, so there's a. A list of them in the packet as well as the two audits that were completed, and. It's really a formality. It's actually not required. They just recommend it, so it's a strong recommendation, and they include it as a. A finding in the audit if we hadn't done it, so just bringing it to the committee to consider whether they would like to review and approve those. Each year, or if they're okay with the findings staying on there. They don't need to do that stuff, so it's just, again, a little bit of a formality. And I think the idea is to make sure that the types of accounts that are on there. Are student-centered. Clubs and groups. Which I believe, from my opinion, for the most part, that is the case. I didn't know if he'd had a chance to review them, and if anyone had any questions about them.
Randy?
I was just curious, because the student activity accounts between Nissatistit and Hawthorne Brook, there's a number of differences between them. As well as, you know, things like, I think it was, Nissatistit had a cross-country student activity fund. Where that's a sport, but Hawthorne Brook didn't have anything for cross-country, and I know they still have, or at least they used to have that sport. So I was just curious how these activity, student activities funds actually. Got, you know, came into existence, what, what they're used for, and why there isn't consistency between the schools.
The, the, the clubs originate usually when a group of students gets together and wants to do some kind of a project, fundraise. Have an event such as the New Orleans trip you just voted on, so it's, it's, it's organic in that nature that there needs to be some interest and. Then that's generally where they start from. With the sports, sometimes it's a coach, the coach may have a group of students that want to do some, some activities, and then it gets started and it keeps going. A high school has. A number of athletic groups that. They do fundraising, or they do a trip, or those types of things, and raise money for their, their sport. So it happens both in athletics and extracurricular related. Groups, so there's not, we don't decide whether they have those things. It's really driven by. Who's the advisor slash the students that would like to do it.
Okay, then the only other thing is, I was looking at my list. Nissatistit has. Athletic PE and has their sources gate receipts. If they're charging for sports, is Hawthorne Brook charging for sports and doing gate receipts, and if so, where does their money go?
So that was one that we corrected when we did the Hawthorne Brook Student Activity Audit last year, so the. The auditors felt that those types of receipts belong not in the student activity, since they're a fee-based function. That's true for Nissatistit as well, so those really technically should move to, and the revolving account, the athletic revolving account. We just hadn't gotten that far yet with them. So we did that last year with Hawthorne Brook. We will likely do it with Nissatistit. It's just, again, a formality to move the money into, it wouldn't go away. It would just move the money into athletic revolving.
I think the other thing, just to, just to add to that, Nancy, is that something that we have been working on. As an administrative team for the past, the last central office meeting, but also the last principal's meeting. Is trying to come up with a consistent recommendation to bring forward to the school committee. Around what we are charging for athletic events. User fees, what we are charging for student activity fees, and what we are charging for things such as concerts. Drama productions, musicals, so we plan to bring something to the school committee that's consistent, because right now it is not consistent and has not been consistent. Probably at some point in time, I would guess in November. For the committee to take a look at, so that, again, all of our fees are happening and being charged consistently or not being charged. Consistently throughout the district.
There is a document that the school committee had voted many, many, many years ago. Is not in anywhere accessible, is very hard to find, so not. You know, faulting anybody, but I believe those fees were put into the handbooks way back when, when that was voted, that document was voted on. So I very much look forward to bringing that back to the forefront and getting this settled in a place where everybody knows where it is.
And I do believe that there was a hold on charging a gate for middle school sporting events. Maybe one of the. Middle School principals could weigh in if they have. Information on that, but I believe it was, prior to COVID, there was a. All fee being charged, and that's where that was going, but I believe during COVID, and maybe even recently, it's been a while since we charged for gate. Those, that's money that's just been accumulated.
That's right, Nancy. We haven't been charging any gate fees. And spectators haven't been allowed at many of the events anyway.
Same for Hawthorne.
All right, thank you, Susan.
Yes, my. Thought, Randy, on the cross-country, Nissatistit was inspired by looking at the high school. I think a lot of times, as you know, with our kids, when they're at the high school, they'll be playing a sport, but then there's a desire to get. Extra uniform items. I mean, the school provides certain uniform items that you're expected to return, but then sometimes track pants or a sweatshirt or. So my guess is that cross-country one was established, so they had a way to collect the money from the students that wanted to, say, buy a not-required sweatshirt. And then purchase the sweatshirts, would be my guess.
You're right, Susan.
Nancy, just a clarification on the accounts that say they're not active. Are they still? Open but not active, or are they actually just closed and on there for historical reasons?
They are probably not, there's not a group of students that are actively involved in that, but there's a balance.
Oh, okay.
There could be a balance of, of funds there, in which case, at some point, we'll review those and. Determine a closeout procedure. There's a few other things that were on the audit that's not on the agenda tonight, but. Just quickly, there are some policies that probably need a review, which I'll get with Randy to read them, read through what their recommendations would be. But closing out of accounts that are. Defunct or no one's participating in anymore is one of those things, and we have some language. We just need to review it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from anybody? If not. I will take a motion to. Approve the sub-account listing for the student activity accounts at the high school, Nissatistit Middle and Hawthorne Brook Middle Schools.
So moved, Lisa.
Second?
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions or comments? All right, Dave? Randy, do you have a question?
Just wondering whether we're gonna correct the gate receipts. For Nissatistit this year.
Yes, I'll work on, on that and report back when it's finished.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yeah.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is unanimous. Thank you. Next up is integrating social and emotional learning into academic learning grants. Mr. Bobo Reese?
Good evening, everyone. So I am very pleased to let you know that. North Middlesex is one of ten communities selected to receive this grant called Integrating Social Emotional Learning into Academic. Learning, and through the grant, it's a ten thousand dollar grant. Will have access to and training in the use of an assessment tool that will be used with our students in grades four, five, eight, and ten. And it's really for them to self-assess where they feel they are within the five social emotional learning competencies. And it's really for them to self-assess where they feel they are within the five social emotional learning competencies that are identified through an organization called Castle, which is really the leading organization nationwide in terms of implementing social emotional learning within the schools. So our students will take an assessment in the fall. They'll also take an assessment in the spring. And the data that we'll use, we'll use the data from these assessments to really evaluate our programming and make adjustments to our practices so that if there is a certain area that many students are identifying, self-identifying as being a weaker area, that lets us know that we need to kind of build our curriculum and supports within that area. Right now, it's a one-year grant. I don't anticipate there's any costs after this year. Well, the costs this year really are around providing the training and access for educators from all the schools to work together to understand how to use the data effectively. And I know there are, I had received a couple of questions just in terms of security. It's the assessment itself is administered through the DESI website. And so it's the safe server. They'll have access to our data in terms of the student responses, but it's nothing that gets reported out publicly beyond what we're able to use within the schools. And one other question that had come up, just in terms of the roles that parents play within social emotional learning. That's not really captured as part of this grant process. It's really more for our students to self-assess where they feel they are within those competencies and then for us to look at curriculum programming. But I think as we move on and we get the data and we can start to look at how do we involve parents in the process more efficiently. So I'm excited to get this grant and move forward with it.
Excellent. Thank you. Susan?
Gary, I am really sorry. I know one of the questions I emailed to you, I missed, I missed your answer to some technical issues on this end. What was the, is it a recurring grant? Is it a one-time grant?
And so, so as of right now, it's a one-time grant. I do know that we're in cohort two. This is the second round of them doing the grant. There was some additional funding that was provided to districts that were in the first round last year that we might be able to access if we identify perhaps any areas curriculum that we need to build on. But as of right now, the expectation is it's a one-year grant.
Okay, yeah. And one of the reasons obviously we approve the grants is just to make sure what our ongoing financial responsibility might be. That's why I was beyond the first year if we were going to have any.
No, I get it. And I think the focus of this grant is really on how to use that assessment system. And that's something that we'll have access to and there won't be a financial cost associated with it in the future.
Okay, so once we get through the first year, we know what we need to know and we just carry on.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else have any questions? If not, we'll take a motion.
So moved.
I'm just looking for the language.
I tricked you, I didn't read it this time.
Oh, yeah.
So I move that we, that we approve the Integrating Social Emotional Learning into Academic Learning Grant provided by the state.
Second.
All right, Susan and Lisa, any last questions or comments? All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yeah.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And Ivo, yes. So that is all unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Next up, we have the School Improvement Plans. Superintendent Morgan and Principals?
Yes, so again, these were a part of the packet. I'm hoping that most of the committee were able to see them, that they were on the website as well. And I do have the elementary, I have elementary, middle, and high school representation here. I'm not sure who's going to be presenting at each level, but we'll start off with the elementary. I do see Ms. Gleason, Ms. Kajaka, Ms. Cromwell-Gapp here, so we can certainly start with them. And again, Strategic Plan, the School Improvement Plans, something that we try to look at. You know, with COVID, there was a bit of a delay, but we did go through and look at them again, making sure that they are aligned to our five-year strategic plan that we have two years left on. And so that's what the principals will be reporting on tonight. And they'll be reporting again how each level, elementary, middle, and high school relate back to that five-year strategic plan that the entire district is under as far as the umbrella goes. So we can start off with the elementary principals again. I'm not sure who's going to be the spokesperson, but I'll let you start and figure it out.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Cromwell-Gapp. And so the first plan you have is for the elementary schools, and I have my colleagues with me. So there are three main strategic objectives, one, two, and three. And so the first one is consistent and rigorous curriculum. As Brad Morgan said, we are in the third year of our plan, of a five-year plan. And the initiative that we're going to focus on this year is implementation of illustrative math as the core curricular materials for grades K to eight. So I'm sure you're going to hear about this in the middle school. And so for that initiative, we are looking to support teachers with materials and PD. We started over the summer. We've had, we have five days of PD. We already have completed two days with, I'm sorry, three days with two days, future dates to be determined. And then we're creating and participating in implementation teams with ongoing support for staff, students, and families. Every month, we have two curriculum afternoons on Mondays, and one of those are designated for our math. And we focus on those and those dates are provided. So within all of that, we are looking at assessments, implementation, student outcomes. We're looking at focusing on student data and then taking that data to enhance our instructional practices with the students. And our dates are ongoing for that part of the plan.
The second objective that we are focusing on for the elementary school connects to the second initiative with the district plan. And this is something that you've seen before, as it is, I think we're going into year four, is really focusing on meeting the needs of all students. And what the elementary is focusing on this year in particular is beefing up our intervention program. And that's also going to be connected to the first objective because with the illustrative math, we also have a new screener that we're using or an assessment tool called iXL. So we'll be using that to gather data on student performance and then using iReady for K to two ELA because that has the dyslexia screener in it. So between the two different assessment tools, we'll be collecting how students are doing and performing in ELA and math and then putting together meaningful intervention plans for those kids that need it. But similar to what we did last year, we'll continue to also offer enrichment opportunities for kiddos that have demonstrated that they're really in a good place in having some really good skills with the current curriculum. So we can have them do something a little bit more enriching to their curriculum experience in either ELA or math. And this will also be embedded into the intervention block, what we call it, when at the elementary school, what I need because it is really student-specific and targeted to what the individuals need, but in the whole classroom. Also, we have the interventionists that are working with kids that need more targeted support, and they'll be pulling them out in small groups. And this is, again, the way the program has evolved over the past couple of years. It is now school-wide as opposed to where Title I was by rank order. So this is an opportunity for all kids to get the support that they need. Kristin?
Yep. So then the third objective that we're working on is continuing to strengthen the community and culture between the different schools and the district as a whole. We are planning different things throughout the school year to kind of promote that. We're going to continue to do our spirit weeks as an elementary school. More information will be coming soon. We just completed a district-wide door decorating contest at each of the building levels. We're going to be taking that to the district level soon. And then we are just going to continue to find ways to connect with the preschool and, you know, with the elementary school and then with the elementary schools to the middle schools to continue to work on that transition plan for students moving forward. I think that's about it.
Any questions on the elementary school's School Improvement Plan?
Susan, any question?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify on the mathematics program. Are the students, all students be exposed to that this fall as the math program for the school year?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Shall we move on to middle school?
All right, it sounds like it.
Okay, Ms. Young and Mr. Webster?
Yep. So there's some similarities between the middle school and elementary levels as far as our objectives. We're starting off Objective One, also with implementing illustrative mathematics as our core curricular materials for grades five through eight. And so, you know, we're going to be monitoring progress as far as supporting teachers with materials and professional development, which has already begun, creating and participating in the implementation teams so they get that ongoing support, not only for the staff but students and families as well. We're going to be fully implementing the curriculum and assessments. We'll be working collaboratively, our teachers, to better practice their student outcomes. And we're going to continue to rely on student data to make adjustments and improve learning and mastery in their classrooms. And we're going to be actively engaged with formal and or informal data to inform and revise as such as we progress through the material. And I'm sure, as you can see, there's some resources needed to support this, such as the IM Math Resources. We're going to be scheduling meetings with curriculum directors, Kevin and Lisa, to kind of help work through things as we go. And we have scheduled curriculum meetings each month, and we'll be giving time for teachers to collaborate as well.
For our second initiative, we are similar to the elementary schools. We are working on our targeted interventions. Last spring, we presented to you about our intervention groups and how that's going. Last year was the first year that we've had what we call Patriot Time in the middle schools. So this year, we're going to continue that and really try to beef it up a little bit more. Kate spoke about the tool iXL, and that's something that we're going to be using at the middle school level as well. Our students really seem to like it a lot more than the program we were using last year, which was iReady. So we're excited by that, that the kids seem to be more invested in that program. So we're going to work on both ends, the remedial end and also enrichment for students who need a little bit more. Very similar to what the elementary school said.
And then for Objective Three, we'll be working on our climate and culture and supporting our teachers, our administrative team. So Lauren and I, as well as Evan and Shantel, will be looking to find ways to collaborate and coordinate some opportunities for each of our staffs to build relationships together. We're looking for something in the fall as well as in March. We're going to research and implement some options to kind of further celebrate and appreciate, excuse me, appreciate all that our staff does during the course of the year. And, you know, we, as mentioned before, there's the door decorating contest. You know, we actually, this week, we're working at the middle school. And we'll be contributing to and participating in a district-wide celebration of teaching and learning. That's also going to be in May. And establish and participate in a district-wide committee for the development of core values as well, which is going to be really important stuff as we proceed through the year. So really, this year, we want to focus on celebrating all the hard work that our teachers do, as we do every year. But we think that this is a really a great opportunity post-endemic to just make sure that we're supporting and celebrating all our efforts, so.
Yes, just to jump into what Jason just said, we really found that COVID really was difficult for our teachers. And they worked so hard, all of our staff members did. So we really feel as a staff morale was starting to take a bit of a dive. So we really feel as though we need to beef that up a little bit and get our culture strong. And it really starts with the adults in the building. And so that's a big focus for us this year.
Questions for the middle school?
No, just, again, I know we say it a lot, but can't appreciate enough everything that teachers, staff, administrators in the building do. Talking to a few teachers during the open house even a couple of weeks ago, it's just, you can see the last few years have worn on everybody. So again, just, I appreciate everybody continuing to give it 110% after everything everybody's been through. So kudos, and it's, again, much appreciated.
Thank you.
You. Okay, and then we have the high school, Mr. McMahon, Ms. Smith. I don't think I'm missing anyone else that's on the call. So take it away, Principal McMahon.
Thank you. So just looking at, we spent some time this year really making sure that we aligned within the five-year plan, but also kind of stuck to our administrative goals as a high school administrative team. So looking at our first objective, we've got a curriculum, it's a bit of a shift from a couple of years ago. Or actually, I believe my first year, 1920, we looked at revamping midterm exams. And through COVID, through data collection, feedback from department heads, this year, we're actually doing away with midterm exams. Not due to data collection, but more for a variety of reasons, focusing on one scheduling. It became a kind of a scheduling challenge in January after the break, kind of ending the semester, throwing a week in the middle for midterms and grading. But additionally, more and more, we found that there was enough common assessments going on that we didn't feel the need to shut down essentially for a week to do these big exams in the mid part of the year. So this year, we're going to be looking to do away with midterms, but then beef up final exams. Ideally, more project-based, kind of get away from pen and paper traditional final exams, make them more interactive and culminating and using final exam week in June for more showcasing than actually exams themselves. We did a vote with the department heads, 10 out of 11 departments agreed that we should give it a shot this year, move away from midterms. Like I said, for a variety of reasons, but, you know, we learned, one of our takeaways from COVID, from a pedagogical standpoint, from math, I think instructional standpoint was really that we kind of lost a week, then a semester, where we could be doing more productive things than kind of getting bogged down with exams. So a lot, we're going to be kind of navigating that this winter to figure out how we still want to continue with common assessments, as I think each department values that for data collection and driving instruction. But shifting away from midterms and then beefing up our final exams. And really, the time, the resources dedicated for that will be done using our curriculum on Mondays. And it's some speedy time, but the idea of having staff collaborate within PLCs in departments to kind of figure out best means of assessments and sharing best practices in that process. With regards to Objective Number Two, meeting the needs of all students, we are very happy this year to have reestablished and kind of reinvigorated Flex Block. And with that, we have several plans for Flex Block and kind of spearheading some of those now. But one of our interwoven goals with Flex Block is looking at our capstone. We've talked a couple of years now about implementing a legitimate, robust capstone for seniors. We've piloted the past couple of years. Despite COVID, we've had a dozen or so students do very kind of cool externships that were career-based outside of the academic realm. For example, we've had a few seniors the past couple of years have been taking, you know, English 12, math, and phys ed during the senior year and earning credits outside of school by doing either co-op or externship. So we want to use Flex Block as a piece of that, you know, beyond remediation and beyond, you know, skill reinforcement, but also kind of use that as a jumping off point for our capstone project. Again, like I said, we've piloted a few. Our goal is to really kind of roll it out next fall and see how many seniors want to kind of jump on board and help us kind of design what that looks like. We have a capstone committee we formed at the high school to get feedback from staff, developing a survey, hopefully to give to kids during Flex Block soon, but really try to utilize Flex beyond what we've done in the past. And it's only 34 minutes a day. We haven't been able to, as an example, you know, last Thursday, we had Chris Heron come speak at the high school. It was a great speaker and a great event, but we utilized Friday advisory to help kids process that as an option for that day. So Flex Block isn't paying off. And like I said, we want to kind of leverage that as we attempt to build up a capstone to roll out soon. And then with regard to culture and community, Objective Three. And then with regard to culture and community, Objective Three, kind of again, a dual angled purpose here. Continue to, you know, foster what we've been doing with regard to getting events going, making sure that staff and students feel supported in a general sense and in a more intimate sense, you know, I think I did maybe sheepishly boast about our homecoming weekend, how much fun that was, how many kids were involved in that. In addition to kind of fostering that, like I mentioned a minute ago, we really want to use advisories on Fridays. So right now, what we're doing for our Flex Block, which we've moved in the morning, it had been back in 2019, 2020, Flex Block had been offered in the afternoon. We found it to be a little counterproductive after lunch, so we moved it to the morning and finding better results. So Monday through Thursday, students are self-selecting which classes they go to for Flex Block. Friday, everyone goes to their advisories, which they are again, self-selecting for the following week. But we're trying to use those Fridays as often as possible as an SEL opportunity. Like I said, last Friday, we utilized that time to kind of process with the Chris Heron speech. And in the future Fridays, we want to use advisory to either, you know, survey students on their interest in Flex, upcoming events and things of that nature. So really trying to leverage again, that time for an SEL purpose that goes beyond the academic realm on Fridays in particular. So in those goals, we worked as an admin team to make sure that aligned to the five-year plan, but also aligned to our goals as an admin team this year as well. So that's basically it.
Questions from the committee?
Randy?
I just have a quick question. I think it's a really good thing to kind of go towards more project-based assessments, and I think that is wonderful. But I want to make sure that we're not banning tests because they do have their place and their certain subjects. The teachers really should, you know, I want to make sure that they have the flexibility to do what they need to for the students. There are students out there, believe it or not, that prefer a test over a project.
Yeah, no.
And we shouldn't take that away just because the trend right now is to open up projects and other ways for people to show that they have the knowledge that they need in the subject.
Yeah, I totally agree. We're talking with department heads, you know, critical thinking skills and, you know, written expression are still paramount in colleges. So, you know, we still value that and not shying away from that is really just a midterm assessment is what we're looking at. I mean, I was in a math class today, traditional pen and paper test still happening. Yeah, and no way we wanted to turn that, it was more kind of reexamining what our goals are within these big assessments. You know, what are our expectations and hopeful outcomes with midterms or final exams? So I see, I see finals more as a pilot this spring, see what we come up with. But no, I mean, definitely, there's been no deterrent from exams. And, you know, we still give department heads autonomy within departments when they do common assessments. So no, I hear what you're saying, but yeah, definitely, I agree with you. Keeping the test is definitely for a lot of our learners, the way to go.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, I don't believe we need to approve these, correct? This is more just informational?
Informational because they essentially go with the strategic plan, which the committee has approved already. It's just each school's actions towards the strategic plan.
Perfect, thank you. All right, thank you to all the principals and assistants. Appreciate all the work and information on the strategic improvement plans. Next is the, where are we, homeschool report?
So good evening again. With the homeschooling, just as a reminder for the committee, the approvals are an annual approval for families. And when they submit an application, it needs to include information about their curriculum, the way in which that they're going to be assessing their student progress. They have to identify that they're going to meet the minimum hour requirements that are identified. So for K-8 students, it's 900 hours. For high school students, it's 990 hours per year. They also have to provide a little bit in terms of the experience of the family member that is going to be providing the instruction for the student as well as proof of residency. So not surprisingly, both in North Middlesex and across the state, when COVID hit, we saw a huge spike in the number of families that were submitting homeschool plans. So the 2020, 1920 and no, sorry, 2021 and 2122 school years, we saw a large increase in the number of families that were applying for homeschool programming. We have started to see a decrease this year. So there was a decrease of about 16% in the number of students that are on homeschool plans and about 20% in the number of families that have submitted homeschool applications for the 22, 23 school year. It's still not where it was pre-COVID, but I expect that some of that is families that went into a homeschool program and liked it. So are maintaining that and so we'll probably see a slower decline than we actually saw in terms of an increase in the number of families that apply for homeschool programs. Questions?
Susan, you have a question?
Just a curious thing about homeschooling. Do they, do students take MCAS?
They are actually, they are actually not allowed to take MCAS. Because it's, MCAS is based on students that are attending school. And so the state does not allow students to come in and take the MCAS if they're participating in a homeschool program.
Okay, I was just wondering how that worked with graduating because I was thinking it was required, you had to pass MCAS to graduate. Maybe that's a homeschool.
It is, it is. It's a, in order to receive a diploma from North Middlesex or from a high school, you need to meet the state competency determination requirements, which includes the MCAS testing.
So homeschool students under us, no?
They do not receive a diploma from us.
Oh, how do they prove that they've completed their schooling?
So a lot, you know, it's becoming more of a commonplace for families to select this option. So colleges have become a lot more flexible in working with families.
I guess they could do a GED if they wanted, I guess.
Right, right, they could.
All right, I'll do.
Is there any sort of rationale that's provided? I'm just curious.
There's, sometimes some families do provide it, but there's not a requirement. And actually, we can't ask that question. So there's limitations of what we can require. And basically, it's around the curriculum, the assessment and the experience of the family member.
Randy?
Gary, I question, I don't mean to question you, but when you said that we don't give a high school diploma, just how happens at the homeschool policy that we have, we've had in place, we made a minor change to it. The last paragraph in it says, "A student with the approval of the school committee may be awarded a high school diploma if they have satisfied the Department of Education and Secondary Education's competency requirements and has met the district's educational standards for graduation."
Yes, so that's assuming that a student has taken the MCAS for grade 10. So that would be a student that would have had to been in school at that time in order to meet those competency determination requirements.
Okay, that is not clear in this policy and that's something I didn't know.
Well, it says that they have to meet the state competency determination requirements, which is passing the MCAS.
Right, but with this, with this policy, you know, if I choosing, a parent choosing to take their child into homeschool, reading this policy, I never would have known that I couldn't have had my child take the MCAS if they weren't in the school in 10th grade. I may pull this policy from today and take a look at making this clear for parents who want to do this.
Okay, yep, makes sense.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? All right, then we'll move on to the strategic plan review.
So I'm going to share my screen. Robin, are you able to? Enable me to share.
Are you not, you don't see the share option here?
It, when I click on it, it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
There you go, now you should be able to share.
Oh, thank you.
So I think I did that right?
So just as a reminder, the strategic plan, as you know, is a five-year plan. The committee approved it back in 2019 to go through 2024. So the goal of it is to look long-term in terms of what are those areas that we, as a district, value and want to work towards in order to continue to improve. This evening, you heard from the three school levels. And what was really nice to hear and to be a part of is kind of that through line of the work. So you see the consistency of how we're all working together to meet the goals. Within the plan, and this is actually a document that the Mass Superintendent Association encourages for districts to use in terms of the formatting, you identify the mission, vision, core values. The theory of action is a section that really it's one of those if then, if we're doing all these things that we say we're going to do and doing them well, then what is the impact that we're going to have on our students today and in the future? You heard the schools talk about the strategic objectives. So essentially, when the committee, when this document was developed and the committee approved it, there were three areas that were identified as focus areas. The first being curriculum and instruction. And during the time that this plan has been in place, the goal has really been around implementing and revising our common assessments. So there's been a lot of work that's been done with those and really looking at how we're using them and how we can continue to revise them and improve them so that it's not just taking a test or a quiz, but it's meaningful data that helps us improve learning opportunities for our students. The other two areas under the curriculum instruction really have been the focus of Kevin and Lisa over the past couple of years. The first being piloting the math program. So last year, we piloted a few different math programs in the K-8 grade level and then selected one that really better targeted what research and data is showing us about best practices for working with students and for teaching students in the area of mathematics. So this is our first year, the district selected illustrative math, and this is the first year that we're implementing that program. You did hear from the schools in terms of how they're, the work that they're doing around both assessing as well as the professional development to implement the new math program. The other priority area under curriculum instruction is around the adoption of the K-8 ELA curriculum. And that curriculum is called EL, Expeditionary Learning. And last year was our first year of implementing the program and we are in year two. And so the work last year, a lot of it was around working with the company to provide professional development, to build the capacity of our teachers to implement the program. This year, it's a little bit of a shift in terms of professional development where we're trying to create more teacher leaders within the district to help lead that work. So there's still some professional development going on, but it's more about the outside agency providing training and support to our teacher leaders who can then facilitate that work with other educators in the buildings. The second strategic objective that you heard about this evening was around meeting all the needs of all students. And we had four priority areas that were identified under there. The first were around the targeted programs and interventions. So this evening, you heard about the work that's happening at each of the levels, whether we call it the Wind Block or Patriot Time or Flex Block. We're really trying to identify those times within the day that we can more individualize instruction to support students' needs and really meet them where they are and help everyone make progress effectively within the curriculum. The second priority was around providing learners with educational programming and leadership opportunities that meet their individual needs. And really what we're looking at there and what we need to do a little bit more with is looking at how do we create opportunities for our student leaders? So I know the middle school was looking, or the middle schools were looking at, how do they create leadership programs for our students to be student leaders, whether it's eighth grade helpers or working with younger students? And at the high school level, really looking at those opportunities that we have through student council or how do we provide opportunities for students to take on leadership roles within the schools? The third priority was offering them district-wide yearly parent guardian informational opportunities. And so last year, we did provide those three opportunities. There are three programs that are established for this year that Superintendent Morgan puts out information for families to attend. So it's not just learning about the curriculum, not just learning about what's going on in the school, but also learning about how do we support our students beyond the walls of the school. And then the final priority under meeting all the needs of all students is really around the work we're doing with equity. Last year, the focus was on working with our high school staff. We had hired an outside consultant to provide professional development to the staff to understand diversity, equity and inclusion and understand how to implement and support those practices within the classrooms. This year, we are shifting that professional development down to our elementary and middle school teachers. So they're receiving the same professional development training. We've also contracted with the outside agency to do what we're calling a curriculum equity audit. So we're looking at how do we ensure that all students have opportunities to see themselves reflected in the curriculum to have equal access to diverse learning materials? And so we've done working this fall, we've done some training with the consultant around how do we evaluate curriculum from an equity lens? And that training will then lead to us being able to do it independently as we continue to evaluate. We're focusing right now around our humanities curriculum, but we'll continue then to look at math and science as well. Within the third strategic objective, culture, climate and community, it's really about how are we establishing ourselves? How are we promoting the district? And so you've heard some different things happening from the principals in terms of the work they've been doing there. We also have the WEARNM kind of focus. And there also, there's been some work and we'll continue to do some work this year of really looking at the, where are we, where are they now? So highlighting some of our postgraduate students and the successes they've had and helping students to be able to see examples of people that have graduated from North Middlesex and where they've gone and how they've been successful. You heard some of the schools talking about that second priority area, about developing and expanding interschool opportunities for students and staff. And so that's really about looking at how do we, rather than, you know, I've worked in districts where each school has its own mascot and each school looks different, but really what the focus has been within North Middlesex is we're all patriots. So how do we create those opportunities for our students to collaborate with one another, for teachers to collaborate with one another and to see not just that we're working at the elementary level, the middle school level or high school, but really that through line between all three schools? And then the third area is really around cultivating the ongoing community partnerships. And that's one of the areas that when I look at the document and I got a little bit of feedback in terms of the work that we did last year, I think there are more opportunities that have happened over last year that aren't necessarily reflective in the document that was submitted to you. So I want to build that up a little bit in terms of evaluating some of our past practices and then looking to see going into this school year, how do we enhance those opportunities with our community partners?
Susan, you have a question?
Oh, yes, I did. The, under the red column there, we used to have a, an item on there that obviously is important to us. An item on there that obviously is important to us and based on the grant we just approved. Something I'm moving forward with, which was establish and integrate social and emotional learning strategy in efforts to create a safe. And positive learning environment. So just want to make sure we don't lose track of that. I know we have a few extra in column two than we did when we originally approved of in two thousand nineteen, but and I think, I mean. I'm looking at current two point two. I don't want to lose track of that. I mean, I think educational programming leadership opportunities is a great thing. Um but I I don't want to lose track of the original two point two, which is socially emotional. I think we have a lot of great things to report.
Thank you. I'll take a look at that.
Thanks.
I think part of that too, just to add to that is that we are annually, well, this is a five year plan. If we've accomplished a goal. Um in a given year, um just based on how it was outlined and how it was framed. Then we try to implement new goals as well, but not not forget about the original premise of what the strategic plan was built on. But we try to update our goals annually to make sure that this is a five year plan and as we accomplish things. And as we meet our goals, we're adding new things to it that still fall under the three strategic objectives.
So we've accomplished our social emotional goal, you think?
Um, as it was originally written, I would say that we have, but we're continuing on to work with that. I mean, we're continuing on working, putting in additional supports for students. But as it was originally written, um it's a goal that we that we had touched upon and we had accomplished. But again, we continue to try to add and update the strategic plan annually. So that we have new goals um or new priorities that fall under the strategic objectives, if that makes sense. Many of these are not taking five years, and that was something that we outlined when we first rolled this five year plan out was that as we accomplished. Um, some of the priorities, we would bring in new priorities that still fell under those strategic objectives, but. I I wouldn't say a anything that we accomplish is means that we're done with it. It just means that we're that we're trying to um expand upon it.
Okay, maybe just so reduces my confusion like the current priority two point two. If we name that two point five instead of using the same numbering, that maybe that would get me a little less less tangled up. Thanks.
Okay.
You know, we um no one else has any questions or comments. The only comment that I have is around the. The continued equity work that we're doing and 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 now engaging with um. Uh staff at at the lower levels. As a committee member, I I I've gotten a lot of feedback from community members and constituents around just. Wanting to know more information about what this is and what the topics are. So if there's anything we can do, and maybe this goes through. The communications subcommittee as well, but anything we can do to um just make sure we're being. Transparent and informative on on what what those topics are. Just to ease any concerns, uh I think that would that would help all of us. Just be able to talk about it even better. So when we do get questions that we're able to. We just have intelligent conversations about it and make sure we can refer them to you as well, Gary.
Yeah, and and you know, just for a point of clarification for tonight, it's not a curriculum that. We're teaching per se, it's more about just the practices and the way that we're trying to make sure that every student feels included. In the schools.
Yeah, and I think that's very a very important clarification that we probably can't repeat enough. Because I think there is that misconception, so I I appreciate you reiterating that again for us.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Gary, do you have anything else or?
Uh, not for the strategic plan.
All right, then you're up again with the professional development.
Thank you. Um, I think I drew the lucky straw tonight.
Busy, busy doc at this evening.
So so in your packets is a copy of the professional development plan for this upcoming school year. As you know, we have the full day professional development days, two days prior to the start of the school year as well as the day in November. So for the first two days, really, the focus was around the equity training for our middle school staff. And implementation of the math curriculum training for our elementary staff. At the high school level, they did some more individual work as a depart as both within departments and as a school as a whole. Looking at um curriculum setting and just those assessment pieces that uh. Principal McMahon spoke about. Going into our November day, that's where we're going to continue some of that equity training. We'll start with our move shifting it down to our elementary staff. And then for our middle and high school staff, one of the things we're looking at both for the full professional development days. As well as our early release delay start days for this year is really starting to have a conversation about. Work that's under been undergoing in some districts around what we call portrait of a graduate. Really developing an understanding of what are the expectations that we have for our students as they leave North Middlesex. And then developing a plan of, okay, if this is what we want our students to know and be able to do. When they graduate from North Middlesex, whether it be going on to college, looking for a career. What are those skills that they need to have in place? How do we then back those skills up to make sure that we're providing opportunities for all students to develop those skills and be successful? So that's going to be really the focus of the work that we do with our middle and high school staff uh moving forward. We do have the. Four early release days for the year as well as the two delayed start days. So the focus of the time, as I said, for the middle and high school will be around kind of that. Portrait of a graduate work at the elementary level will continue to provide some training around the math and the ELA curriculum implementation. You heard some of the principals talking today about the curriculum Mondays, and those are the days that um. Were identified within the teacher's contract. We have two days during the course of the month. One is a building based. Professional Development Day, and that's where the principals are leading the work around curriculum with their staff. And then we have a district level uh day, and that's work that's really being facilitated by both our. Two directors of curriculum, the humanities and STEM, as well as um, we do have a. Specialist coordinator that's coordinating the work for our specialist teachers around those days. That's what I have for that.
Excellent. Thank you. Any? Questions, comments? All right. Thank you, sir. I think you're off the hook now, so I appreciate it. For the other items on the agenda, um I just want to do a pulse check with the committee. So I think superintendent goals. Superintendent Morgan, I don't think we saw those. So I just wanted to clarify unless I missed them.
The goals?
Yes.
Um, so I think there was an issue with them being downloaded, but um that's like again understood, but they were. That they were they were part of the original packet.
I don't. Did you not see him in the in the packet uploaded?
No.
Oh.
It goes from the um professional development plan to the MASC resolutions.
Can't see it right now.
That's okay. So I I I'm more just saying, is it okay if we pass over that?
Sure.
Um, we'll do that the next meeting and then. Did folks have time to review the MASC resolutions? I know that's usually a lengthy. Part, but we seem to have done well on time, so we can either defer that or. Dive into that because those aren't, we don't need those. Robin, what's the deadline for? Oh, we vote at the.
We do.
Right, so.
You you do need them um because the next meeting is a uh is a workshop.
Okay, so we'd have to add it after the workshop or vote now. Uh Randy?
Do we have anybody going?
We haven't. That I think is number ten on the agenda is to select a delegate. And I don't know, I haven't, actually, I have got the book in the mail the other. Maybe a week or so ago. I I don't even know if they're doing a virtual option or if it's all in person this year. Robin, do you happen to know by any chance or?
I I did not see a virtual option. Um, there could very well be one, but I just I didn't see it. I I know it's in since this year.
Was anybody interested in going? Dave?
I went two times ago. It's not my turn.
What were the date? Was it the first weekend in November?
Yeah, it's November second is the delegate assembly, so I think the rest of it is usually. Although Wednesday sounds early for the delegate assembly.
I know it's Wednesday to Saturday and just not sure what day the delegate assembly is.
Yeah, it's Wednesday, so it's November second to the fifth. And this time the delegate assembly is on Wednesday at three P M. So we can. Come back to that unless anybody is interested. And again, Robin, I keep putting you on the spot with questions. Do can we vote by proxy on these? Do you remember? If we don't have anybody there?
Um, I I don't recall off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't either.
I don't think you can, because when I attended, there was. Yeah.
So you've got to be there, okay.
And I believe it was all voice.
I think you're right, especially with the amendments and stuff that happen on the floor usually.
Give another district to yell extra loud for us. I'm just kidding.
All right, um, so we'll come back to that if folks want to think about if they want to attend. Susan?
Um, I have a question uh back on the strategic plan. It's related to the question I, you know, I did a follow up on the question I already asked.
So can we come back to that? Because I want to wrap up that MASC discussion first.
Okay.
So if nobody wants to go, we will talk in our next meeting and figure out if anybody has decided they want to go. For the resolutions. Do folks want to do those now or do you rather defer that to what would end up being after our workshop most likely?
Well, if no one's going, is there any point?
I guess yes and no depends on the resolutions. There have been resolutions in the past that uh. We have used as support for other initiatives in the district. Like equity being one of them. Randy, do you have a question or comment?
Just a comment. I just wanted to say for anybody who hasn't been to uh the MASC conference, I've been to. Probably at least five of them uh in my time here, if not more than that. There actually are some really good um. Panels that they have going on uh on a variety of different topics. Um, I definitely found it very worthwhile to go. Uh, you kind of get a little bit energized uh once you do go on different subjects. They put out there, I believe I did see it come through. I didn't look through it very closely there. All the different panels that they have planned right now and the different speakers. So if you haven't been and you can make it even uh for like the Friday and Saturday or something like that, or take a look and see if you can make it for one or two days. I definitely do think it's worthwhile. I do agree that it kind of gets you fired up and reenergized about um the commitment made by being voted here. But it's also an incredible professional development opportunity. Well beyond charting the course.
Yeah, I agree. There is, I mean, the sessions actually I thought were fantastic. And for me, that's how I ended up with my Robert's Rules of Order book that's on the shelf behind me, so that was well worth it right there. All right. So we don't want to go through these tonight, we will um. We'll put this on the agenda then for after the workshop. And if we decide not to send a delegate, then we can decide which, if any, the resolutions we want to tackle. And do it that way. Are folks good with that? All right. Uh, Susan, you had a question back on the, I forget which plane, strategic or professional?
Teacher plan. Um, I had mentioned that a two point two. Had changed from social emotional learning to something else. I mean, there's something else that it changed to, it's great. But um I went back to Nancy's update in January of two thousand twenty two. And she had the social emotional one, um where she talked about what was completed, what was in progress and what the next steps were. So I don't think it's complete. And if it is complete, then we just need an update to close it out on the in progress and next step. So what's been done there?
I can take a look at that. Um, I'll pull up the document that Nancy had from back in January and then see where we need to go with that as well.
Obviously, we have ongoing work and maybe it's a matter of taking two point two and renaming it two point six or whatever.
Yeah, I'll take a look. I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
No, that's where I spent my time, uh, not on the resolutions.
No worries.
Plans and strategic plans is what I was coming through.
So we'll move on to subcommittee reports. So accelerated repair, Lisa.
We did meet, um, we did transfer. Some money from Burnham Brook to the Hawthorne project to close out the balance. There is about eighty nine hundred dollars. And then the hope is, and Nancy's hope is that by February, when they meet, we can close these projects out. And that's it for the update.
Don't jinx yourself, Lisa. Look at number three on your subcommittees.
But we're just waiting. We're gonna get there. We gotta get there before next September.
Well, it's a race between you and Mr. Templeton. Who's gonna get there first?
I did not ask him for an update.
That's quite all right. Any questions for Lisa? All right, uh, June, Ashby Elementary.
Um, we had our first two meetings and we're very much in a discussion phase right now. We don't have any recommendations for the committee, the full committee. At this time, uh, we're gathering more information such as the tax impact on taxpayers. And the financial impact on taxpayers, I should say, um, looking at the various options. And then um also some more details from um the MSBA. So our next meeting is October eleven.
Excellent. Is there anything you need from the committee, June? You're in good shape right now.
Uh, not at this time. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, uh, Tom is not on for communications, but we did have a. A meeting and I don't know if anyone else on that committee wants to help me with the summary, but uh we did talk about a couple of opportunities for. Getting information out to the uh to the community. I think we talked about a quarterly newsletter, if I'm remembering correctly. Thank you, Jess. So more discussions on that, but uh just trying to find ways to uh to kind of disseminate information and and. Humanize it a little, so kind of pull relevant things out of meeting minutes and whatnot and put those out to the community in a way that's digestible. Robin's been helping us as well with uh some uh. Uh, some ideas and and mechanisms for that, so. And I think we made a couple of changes to the website. We added a. School committee only email address. I don't know if we talked about that in our last meeting or not, but um. That is now on the school committee page on the district website, so you can email just the committee members, so it goes just to the nine of us. I think that's NM school committee at NM RSD dot org. Going from memory, so don't quote me on that. And then uh again, put some other, I think, updates to the uh subcommittee page with uh the communication subcommittee description and membership, so. That's it for communication. Unless anyone has questions? All right, uh, finance, Lisa?
No update.
All right, so Tom is not on for negotiation, so policy, Randy?
Uh, yes, so there are two policies on here, um like I was just discussing. Yes, so there are two policies on here, like I was discussing with, when we were talking about homeschooling. I'm gonna I'm gonna pull the homeschooling one now. All we were trying to do was to add as space available to allow homeschooling students to utilize any of our classrooms, like labs and such. That right now has been up to the superintendent and the, and the building administrator, if there's room in the class. And we just wanted to make sure that that was in the policy, but I will be revisiting to make sure that it's clear to any parent that wants to do homeschooling, that the district typically does not give a diploma if they haven't been in the school at a time when they took the, the final MCAS in grade 10. I just wanna make sure that is clear for the public. So I'll pull that one out. So the policy that I have up for a first reading is policy IIB, which is on class size. What we did with this policy is we added a section on just kind of explaining to people what our rationale and what we typically hold to as far as class size. Putting in some guidelines so that, so that anybody reading this policy knows what the policy of the district tends to be. And it's not a big surprise when we start to get some classrooms that are a little bit larger. For the public's benefit, if they're not looking at the policy right now. Basically, what we have in here is that at any grade K to four class that reaches a 30 students will be split. Any grade K to four class that reaches 25 students will be looked at the, at by the administration on an individual basis for any mitigation strategies that may be appropriate. And then any, any grade five through six class that reaches 28 students will be looked at by the administration on an individual basis for any mitigation strategies that may be appropriate. Otherwise, the policy is staying the same.
Thank you. And any questions for Randy on that policy? Susan?
Are these just for the core classes, I assume, like banned? You expect it to be? No, yeah, no, these are grade K through four classes. They are not the specials. Okay, thank you. And then I, I take that back. So it's clarified in the statement above it saying that knowing many factors determine acceptable individual content area class size, the school makes the following guidelines. I apologize for not reading that first. No, I, and I read that too. I just forgot about that while we're sitting here. And I thought you did, the, the committee did a nice job on finding words for what we just kinda do naturally as part of the budgeting process. Thank you. So I will move that the school committee approve policy IIB class size for a first reading.
All right, any other questions on the policy? All right, Dave? Dave, you're on mute. All right, Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous without Dave's votes. What else you got, Randy? Do you wanna talk about your?
The regional agreement. Okay, regional agreement, we're gonna have to reconvene. We did get feedback from the state on that. There are a number of things that we need to take a look at and they've requested a meeting with us to discuss some of that. Additionally, I've reached out to the towns and it looks like Ashby is not planning on holding a fall town meeting at this time. I have not heard back about Townsend. Pepperell is having a fall town meeting. Whereas this needs to be approved by all three towns. We should probably do it at the same time of year. So we'll probably end up having to hold off until the spring town meetings, the regular annual ones. But we'll just continue. We'll find out what, you know, if the state have a meeting with them and then we'll take a look at any changes from what we already put together that we need to make and I'll bring it to the committee.
Thank you, Randy. Jessica?
Townsend will have a fall town meeting if they just haven't picked a date yet.
Appreciate that information. Thank you.
And Randy, if we don't like if we, if we had to wait for a spring town meeting, then does that regional agreement have to wait till the following July to take effect or how does that work? Cause I know there was a there was a period of time, it doesn't take effective media. I forget what the duration was.
I, well, there's a process. So once the towns approve it, then it needs to go and get the commissioner's approval.
Right.
Once the commissioner's approval is, I have to double check and see. I think it can still be for the following year. You know, fiscal year. I will double check on that if we can get his signature on it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, anything else from folks? So we will I guess officially table or defer the superintendent goals, the delegate selection and the MASC resolutions. Or after our workshop, we'll have that on the, on the agenda for that evening. All right, if there is nothing else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June? Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So we're adjourned, everybody. Appreciate the time. Have a good evening.